So, of course, we're here to support your students. And for you students, we're here to support you guys. That's what we're here for. We're here for Ben. And so, the idea behind Rock Project is really a brilliant thing, to get kids in, playing music, and collaborating with each other. And so, we've served over 200 families now. Over 200 families have brought their students to us to, at the very least, get a private lesson. And in large part, we've had over 200 students play live shows, which is amazing. We've had 90 unique themes. That's 90 different season show themes, ranging, of course, from the Silver Screen Show, which we did our first one in 2012, all the way up to The Police, which we're doing now. And so many different things in between. It's been really fun. We've also had 8 100% original seasons, which is kind of my favorite part about our school, is that we keep the original music coming. And it's been a consistent season now. For two years, we have had, except for summertime, we've had originals in every season for two years, and it's been really fun. The group has gelled in a huge way. They come up with songs on a dime. They've actually come up with over 80 original songs, which is amazingly cool. Also, we've had, we could say nine, because we had one show, which was the Beck Show, the Beck Song Reader Show, where there was no recorded music. They learned it all off of a book, and then interpreted the songs for themselves. That was like our sort of segue into original music, which is amazing. We've had 36 or more live season shows that nested all 90 of those themes in them. And, you know, for a touring musician, that would be a kind of a slow year. But, of course, we're putting on shows for the whole school throughout these years. And it's been really amazing to see the growth that goes on from show to show. And some kids have been around for 10, 12, 20 shows, which is really amazing. We also have had 38 summer camps, which is then 38 more shows. And a countless number of songs. I think at one point, over the summer, we had the interns going through the song list, which is, I think now approaching 1,000 songs that we've done, which is amazing. So, as it turns out, kids love this program. This is summer camp, this summer. I believe this is summer camp number two, one of our bigger camps. We've noticed that our camp show are getting bigger and bigger. We had our record number of students. We had 20 students in a camp this summer, in the fifth camp.
We found it!
I'll say.
We found it!
We made it. And so, it was a handful of, it was definitely a large handful of students. But, one of our more amazing shows was that fifth summer camp show this past summer. So, music helps students in their life journey. To be honest, it helps adults in their life journey too. And I'll talk a little bit more about how we do want to start incorporating more and more adults into our program in terms of offering our service to just the greater community. But, of course, our mission is to serve youth, and so that's where we start, and that's where it begins. So, these students are our house band. Some of them are former students. But, this is, one of the levels they can get to is playing shows at Amiga Records. Which is, I gotta say, prior to doing youth music stuff, when I was just doing bands on my own, it was like impossible to get this gig. And, of course, now, these kids get the opportunity to play in some of the best events and some of the coolest events around the city. It's also really fun to note that the music is really good for the human brain. And I don't know if you guys have sort of listened, on the radio, they talk about it a good amount. The human brain, it turns out, isn't as cut and dry as they always thought, which was, "We only use 10% of our brain. And we only use this part of our brain when we're doing this thing. And this part of our brain, we're doing that thing." But, the truth is, we use all of our brains, all the time. And music is one of those things that actually uses a lot of different parts of the brain. And it's really good for fostering learning, helping with learning disabilities. Even one as simple as, you know, ADHD, which I think probably everybody has, to some extent. And it's one of those sort of universal tools to help people learn, to make people just have something more to do with their creative energy. And in some cases, their physical energy. Because the connection of sound to body, the connection of tones to a motor skill is a very important skill to develop. So, it's also a huge conduit for social interaction and collaboration. As I know many of you guys who are here, you students, have met very good friends here at Rock Project. And this is a great avenue to do that, as you guys all know really well. As I go on in this discussion, we're going to start building into how we can sort of offer this to more people. This was one of the summer camps. I think this was the first summer camp of the summer. It looked amazing onstage with the, you got your whole sort of streamers up. They were actually having a birthday party there that evening. We can't take credit for that. But I'll talk a little bit more later on about making our shows even more interactive and more exciting for our audiences. So, we are in the community. We have a handful of folks at APG 80 Middle School. We do offer a program there every Thursday, and we do it all year long now. It started out as just one semester, the spring semester, and they liked it so much that they've added it all year long. But we do 12 of their 15 weeks in each semester. And in these programs, so far, we've served over 24 students. After this year, we will have served over 30 students. And that sounds like a kind of small number. But I have to say that putting rock and roll instruments in kids' hands who have never played, and drum kits in kids' laps that have never played, and trying to get a group of eight or nine kids together and play songs together is definitely a task. However, a lot of these students have never played a guitar, never played a bass, never sat down at the drums. And by the end of the season, they're all playing in a show. When we started it, we didn't really have a live element to it. They made like a little music video that was cool. But, actually, getting onstage and having to perform in front of an audience like this is a totally different muscle, and it just forces the learning a little bit more. Though I don't want to make it sound like we're trying to force you to learn it. It's more like, it just sort of fosters the brain to be like, "Okay, I really have to learn this. I have a goal that I've set, and I've got to perform." So, all of the sessions are held at APG. We don't do them here, which is out in the Sunset on 38th and Ortega. And there's a picture of the space coming up. And Bay Area Community Resources has taken over what they call the Beacon. It's a sort of a, I'm not entirely sure, but they fund a lot of these programs. And they do fund our program, which is a huge help for us. And it's just a really great program. This is the space that we work in. It's just a room, not too much different than some of our studios upstairs. And here are some of our kids. You can see Newman sort of hiding back here. He comes out and does a program with me. I've also got Derek Barber as one of my other teachers that I'm training. And I'm working to train as many teachers as possible, because this is just one school in the city. And ultimately, this is one school in the Bay Area or in the state of California. So, we're also in the public library. As many of you have known, I think almost all of you were involved when we did the show in the Chord Auditorium. And what they have there now, which they did a few years ago, is the Mix. And some of our house band kids who are here go there every month and play a show on Saturdays. And then on Tuesdays, we offer an open mic program there, where teens can come in and just play a song that they want for the teens that are there. It's a very, very cool spot. And one of my favorite things about it is it's actually teens only. They don't, they will welcome parents in to see their kids perform, but they generally have it as a space just for teens. It's for students age 13, 12 or 13, up to 19. And they can come in there, and they can access computers. They can access library stacks. They can access all kinds of multimedia, including video, green screens, really nice cameras. There's a fully operational recording studio in there that kids can use. There's also a multi-use space where kids can sort of get together and have meetings, work on projects, do all that kind of stuff. And so, the fact that they've wanted to partner up with us is really huge. And so, we're still working with them. We do the monthly performance in open mics. And as I mentioned, we did the performance in Chord Auditorium. Are you sure of hands who were at the Chord Auditorium performance? Is anybody, how many folks were there? So, not as many as I thought. We, it's a very large, it's about a 500-seat auditorium. They have a full state-of-the-art projection system in there, and sound system. And we did our Silver Screen Show, where we actually screened all of the films for each song throughout the show. It was an amazing show. We're working on offering more programming in public libraries. The main one that we just piloted in September were free lessons in the Western Edition branch. They have a multi-use room, and almost all libraries do. And just in general, the public library is an amazing resource for our society. And it's amazing that it has the amount of resources it does. It's true that some libraries are far more crowded and far more difficult to access than others. But they all have internet, they all have books, they all have different types of multimedia that you can access. And so, for us, it could be a very good partnership. And so, we get free lessons in the Western Edition, which was every Wednesday for two hours, and we served over 20 kids. They came in and just sat down, got a guitar lesson, got a bass lesson, got a chance to play the piano. We can't offer drums in the library, unfortunately. I think for obvious reasons. But depending on the branch, there are different things we can do, because they're all set up slightly differently. Some of them have rooms that are kind of off and away from the stacks, and so people can be a little bit louder in there. But a really successful program. And ultimately, we could have programs like this in every branch. And we could have on a different day of the week. What that means is more kids that have access to instruments, more parents that have a place to take their kid to learn music, where it doesn't cost them $50, $60 an hour to get a lesson. The lessons are short, they're 20 minutes. But if there's no one booked in the next slot, they can sort of bleed over into the next slot. And the amount of exposure that kids can get on a weekly basis is really great for the community. Because we had so many kids sit down and be like, "I've never touched a guitar before." And just to feel the weight of the guitar and just explore how it works is a huge sort of accomplishment for a lot of kids out there. So, we're really happy to be doing that. That's the website, The Mix at SFPL. Check it out. As you kids see a lot of teens in here, I know we have a lot of very busy teens. But it's definitely a really good resource to know about, especially if maybe you have a project you need to do, a video project for school, but you don't quite have the resources. You can edit there, you can have a green screen there. You can get ahold of them and ask them about it. You can always get ahold of them at The Mix and say, "Hey, I go to Rock Project." And they can say, "Great," and they'll take really good care of you. And so, the public library is something we want to foster as much as possible. So, prior to this year, we've had just a straight tuition-based model, where you can just pay your monthly fee, and you get your lesson, and you get your group rehearsal. And you get your lending library access, which some people use. And actually, really excited to say that it's been being used more and more. Folks are coming in and just checking out an instrument, taking it home for a month or two, and then bringing it back at the end of the season. Just the other day, one of our house band kids came in and ran a couple of bongo drums and some percussion stuff, and played a show at the chapel, which was amazing. And so, it's a really good resource for our community to be able to come in and be like, "Hey, you know, I want to try a drum kit out, but my parents don't want a drum kit for the next 10 years." So you can come in and just check one out, and we'll be happy to give you one. So, prior to 20, prior to this year, like I was saying, we have the tuition-based model, where you get an extra lesson for another amount and another rehearsal for another amount. And what we're trying to do is, we're trying to move towards a little bit more of an inclusive membership-based program that starts for, you don't get lessons or rehearsals, but you have access to open studios, which means you can get ahold of us and come in and just rehearse for an hour or two, which is a really good resource for students. You can also use any of the equipment that we have, including our recording equipment, our percussion stuff. You can sit at the drum kit for an hour, because you just need the stress relief. You can come in and do that. We also are, from this point forward, including all of you parents on the membership. One parent is automatically a member of Rock Project, which means that you can come in, and if you want to explore bass while your kid's having a lesson, or if you want to just come in on your own after work and just play the drums, because you just really need to hit the drums hard for a little while, you're welcome to do that. And I hope that parents are willing and open to coming in and doing that, because, like I said at the beginning, it's really great to offer this to the youth. But that's not necessarily fair to exclude the parents, who would definitely benefit from music exposure as well. So, open studio access for all students. As soon as you're a member, you're welcome to use our open studios. We do have blackout dates on them if we have multiple rehearsals running in the decision room, or obviously if we're closed. But we do offer open studios throughout the year. We also have groups available for any student that wants to do multiple shows. You don't have to pay extra anymore. You can just be in multiple shows. We do ask that students who want to be in multiple shows prove that they have the aptitude to be in both shows, and so that they're not spreading themselves thin being in two shows and overbooking the material. So if a student wanted to be, for instance, in Jimi Hendrix, but they also want to do some songs in The Police, we want to make it so that the borders of being in two shows is no longer there, you can just be in, do whatever sort of theme you want to do. And that means, so if you wanted to, if your student was so wild about Rock Project and so committed that they wanted to do the originals on Fridays, and then also be in both shows on Saturdays, we welcome that with open arms now. And that's what we'd like to do moving forward. So, also, extra lessons. If you want to book a second lesson as like a second lesson that you get guaranteed every week for 45 minutes, that's a discussion that you can open up with Guthrie here or myself, and we can work out how that works. But if you just want to take a lesson in vocals, because you just want a vocal lesson, and you want a little touch-up, then you can get a vocal lesson. And we offer a really, really, really competitive price. Actually, it's just cheap, $25. And so, as a private music instructor as well, for a 35-minute vocal lesson, I would charge $60. And that's just a going rate for that vocal lesson. But what we're trying to do at Rock Project is get that price down as much as we can so that people have more access to it. And the membership idea is so that we can just get more people to support our program, and then also get services that they may want to have. So, again, you parents who are on can also get lessons. And it's the same idea. It's a little bit more expensive, but at the same time, very, very affordable to come and get a lesson. And I gotta say, along on the topic, we do have the best teachers around. There's no doubt about it. Larry Luthroyd, Newman, as quirky as he may be, is one of the greatest guitar teachers that I've seen. Derek Barber, one of our newer teachers, is amazing. And I think I'm pretty good at it too. And I'd love to work with anybody who wants to come in and explore the keyboard, or vocals, or any instrument like that. This is on our website, and I'll talk about the website just a little bit at the end. But you can find this on our website, and it's got a breakdown of all of the different price points for what we're working on there. So, check it out. So, a quick rundown on the numbers for Rock Project. And I can't claim to be a financial expert at all. But I do have simple math skills, and I have a calculator on my phone, too. So, the way it works is four students who pay a full monthly tuition. After four students, Rock Project gets $350. That's not a huge number. And so, what that goes to each and every month is all of our different costs that we have. So, we got to pay teachers, obviously we pay insurance. And the insurance costs are high, because we're working with youth. We also have our lease. I gotta say, our lease is a really, really good deal, because we've been here since when this building didn't mean anything, and that lot there was dirt, and that lot there was dirt, and that lot there was dirt. But now, of course, we're surrounded by high rises. And for us to move out, we actually looked just entertaining the idea of potentially moving our space in a space just off of Geary, sort of like in the middle of the city. And they wanted $16,000 a month, which is just a little bit much. And so, that's the city that we live in. But here, we have a really good home. The owners of the building love us. Or, I mean, the Sailors Union, I wouldn't say that I ever love anybody, but they don't, they have no problem with us being here. And they're happy, because we pay the rent on time, and we're good tenants. And everybody else in the building is pretty much a construction company of some kind. And there are a couple of different unions. I think the Carpenters Union is here. And they also do various other sort of unions that come in and have meetings and stuff here. So, this is a breakdown, just directly for labor, meaning for our teachers. $20 a lesson for one student. This is what we pay our teachers. We pay them $20 a lesson. And I have to say, that's a low price. But the thing is that they don't have to schedule. They don't have to worry about cancellations. And not only that, but we try to book them schedules so that they have a nice block, and it turns out to be a pretty good day of work for them. This works out to a little bit over 25 an hour, which is a good price. But as a music teacher, it's definitely very low. $50 is one director for one group rehearsal. That's two and a half hours. $100 gets two of them. And $350 a full month of access to RP for one student. As you guys know, who are paying full price, that covers all the costs for the students for that one student. But again, after we get to four is when Rock Project actually sees $350. So, $1050 is a full-season student, and $4,200 a year is what it costs for a student to come and have all their costs covered for the whole year. As some of you may know, we do have a scholarship program. We've never denied a scholarship, and we don't plan to. And there are a lot of folks, both in this room and who weren't able to make it today, who have supported this program hugely to help our scholarship fund. And we hope that can continue. If there is a thing for students out there that's important, it's being able to access our program. And to be able to do so at an affordable rate. And that's my main goal, is to keep it that way. So, getting towards the end of this little presentation, the question, "How can I help?" And another big reason that I've bringing everybody together today, and we wanted to do this, is because, like I said, we don't see each other too often. And we don't have a chance as much to talk at the season shows, because we're always going to the next thing, loading gear in, loading gear out. Or if it's during the show, it's very loud, and it's hard to really just have a good conversation. And so, the "How can I help?" question is something that I think that maybe we have fallen short with, because we aren't very clear about how you can help us out. And so, there are many ways. Number one, for sure, is to refer students to us. After the first of the year, we're definitely going to offer a student referral credit for our families that are referring students to us. And the thing is that I know it's very difficult to get people's schedules lined up and to get everybody involved on the day-to-day, because it's hard to get to our school and all of those other factors. However, I think that as we move into this more membership-based program, and we're also talking about, Guthrie and I have been talking about being open more days per week, which means more hours for some of our teachers, more access for our students, programs on different days with more options, and finding out what everybody can do so we can ship some of our programming around to cater to everybody's schedules. Student referrals will be huge for us. Again, the more students we have, the more our school benefits. Also, booking the house band is a huge resource for you guys. And it's also really helpful for us. Our house band kids, and we do have a number of them in here, are, they're eager to play shows. They have a set between 40 and 50 songs that they can call up. And they also take requests within reason. When you go, "You want to hear Heart of the Sunrise?" And maybe we're not going to do that one. That's a "yes" song, right, Jackson? So, but within reason, we'll take requests. We'll cater, we'll set those to your needs. And if you have a company party, some kind of family party that you really want the house band for, it could be a very good option to do it. We will definitely work with you to find out what works for your budget. We don't charge nearly as much as most bands that are offering cover music, sort of like covered, sort of specific music. And so, it could be a really good resource for us, and then also a really good resource for you to hire a band. So, also creating a buzz with your friends and colleagues is a great way to help out. That could be social media, tagging us on social media every once in a while, on Facebook, on Instagram. If you guys do take videos, sharing them on, either putting them on YouTube or sharing them on whatever social media outlet there is. If it's good quality video, it's really great for us. And if you do that, definitely let us know. Let us know that you put it out, because we'll then share it on our website, we'll share it on our social media. And then we can create a little bit more awareness around our program. Because there's so many events that I've been to that people have come up and been like, "Where is this program? Where have you guys been? How long have you guys been around?" Like, a year or two, and this is now our seventh year. Just a few weeks ago, we had the Neighborhood Block Party here, where the house band played an acoustic set. And pretty much nobody in the neighborhood even knew that this program was here. So they were really excited to see that there is an art program here. And as you're seeing all these high rises going up all around, there are a lot of kids starting to run around. They're all very small. But in a few years, they may be old enough for the program, and it could be really helpful and supportive for the program here. enough for the program and it could be really helpful and supportive for the program here. So, share our website is another really good thing, and that's rockprojectsf.org. Really, really helpful to get hits on that. Guthrie has actually spent quite a bunch of time redoing the website and updating it, it hasn't been updated for a few years. And so it was time, and now it's just way easier to use, way easier to access all of the information on it. There was a lot of information on it that was kind of, sort of backstory to our school and/or like archives and things, and that stuff has all been moved sort of out of the way, so to speak, so it's a lot easier to just hop on there and check out what's going on, see our calendar, see all the different events we have going on. We also are working on figuring out how to schedule lessons and do lesson cancellations online through our website, which would be really helpful for families and for us as well. But right now, we do have, if there's a new student interested, they can go right to our website and just sign up for an assessment lesson and come in and get it without even having to call us, and it'll notify us, and so that will all be really, really helpful. So, check it out, rockprojectsf.org. And then also, direct donations to our program are always very helpful. If you guys can't afford a monetary donation, that's totally understandable. We'll take instruments, the bass that's been collecting dust for the last six years, we'll take it off your hands if you don't want it anymore. Same with the drum kit or the guitar, or if you have the melodica that just doesn't get used anymore, all of those little instruments can go into our lending library, they can be used on the floor upstairs, really helpful. Also, in terms of equipment donations, your old out-of-date iPhones, if you kept those, we're absolutely happy to take those off your hands. That's a really good way, if you're wondering, "How do you recycle this?", you can just give it to us, we'll upload it with songs, we'll be able to sort of manage what kids can access on it. And that's really helpful for summer camps when kids want to just be on their phones, Snapchatting or whatever it is they do, we can actually start to limit the personal phone use and have devices that are sort of ready to go with all of our material on it and/or all of the content that's best for us, including, and the thing is, I'm not opposed at all to photography, filmmaking, all of that fits into the rock and roll dream, so to speak, all of that stuff. We've had more and more contributions from our students and the artwork for our shows. For a lot of years, I was doing every poster, which was really fun, but it's been great to see more and more kids stepping up and just giving us their artwork and making drawings for shows, making drawings for summer camps, it's really great. So the more of that, the better. That is all I've got for you guys today in terms of what our program has been doing and what we're hoping to do. So, I'm happy to open up the floor to anybody who has any questions, and I'd love to answer them for you if I can. Thank you. Yeah, we are currently sort of recruiting board members, so if anybody is interested in sitting on the San Francisco Rock Project Board of Directors, definitely get in touch with me. Ben, are you interested? I would consider you for the board, Ben, to be honest. I think it would actually be really amazing to have a student representative on the board, that could be very cool, and I would certainly consider that, maybe even two. Any other questions, folks?
Sweet.
What's the worst? Is too old? For the actual program, do they still sign up for membership to use the speakers?
Yes, you can. And actually, that's, I'm glad you asked that because as we've been, as I've been sort of working with a lot of different people in the community, that's people of the mix especially, there's definitely a sort of gray area for nineteen to twenty-five-year-olds, and I know that your students are all under the age of eighteen, but there's definitely, nineteen to twenty-five is a difficult age. Kids are out of school, they may or may not have a job, they're trying to find a job, and they sort of need a place to go or something to do. They find a lot of the people of the mix who have aged out of the mix are coming back, but they have to turn them away because they're twenty, twenty-one years old, and all they really, music just wants a place to go. And so, finding, offering that for former students, I think we definitely do, and then sort of moving forward, figuring out how to offer it for, opening it up to anybody would be definitely a great idea, for sure. Absolutely.
Do you feel a lot of outreach to like elementary music programs within the public schools or any, yeah, elementary schools in the city, just to get that they also get referrals through music teachers? Because that's how we came to you.
Yeah, we, we need to do that, we need to do a better job of that, I'm glad you asked that question, too. We definitely have a couple of teachers at our school that we've done field trips, we've had elementary schools come in on field trips where they brought like the whole class and they toured around Rock Project, and we've done stuff like that. But directly reaching out to elementary school teachers, that's something we definitely need to do. Thanks for mentioning that.
Is there like a, like a prime age, like in your seven or plus years of experience where it's like, parents are more like willing to bring their kids to something like this? Like, not parents, but like, kids are more open to doing something like this? Like, is middle school good or is it like, better in elementary school?
That's a great question. I do think that the younger, the better, but it really is a case-by-case situation. We have a lot of students, I mean, it comes down to how motivated the student is to learn, and also the sort of intangible aspect of Rock Project is the social aspect and sort of how they gel with their group. Some kids come in and just immediately kick it off with the group and are also really excited about learning their music, and so the combination keeps them in the door, and that I think kind of describes almost all of our current students, have like a really good merging of both. We can have students that come in at a very young age who are really excited about it for a year or two and then they just burn out because, you know, it's just too much of a commitment for them. So, it really is case-by-case. I like to think that like sixth and seventh grades is a really ideal sort of target age because they're not quite teenagers yet, they're still figuring out their identity in a lot of ways, and it's a really good starting point for like opening up those social interactions and then also doing it through music. Because a lot of times when I ask kids who are under the age of ten what music they like, generally they don't have any idea. But by the time they're eleven or twelve and then getting to thirteen, they really have a strong opinion about what they want to play and what they want to do. So, I guess, yeah, middle school, early, early part of middle school, for sure. Well, thanks a lot for being here, folks, yeah. There we go.
Is there any like big, huge fundraisers or concerts or anything coming up?
Great question, thanks for asking that. This year, we're actually doing an entirely youth showcase. We're going to be doing our groups that we have, our normal groups, but then we're also going to be opening it up and we're going to be taking submissions for student bands, Rock Project or not, doesn't matter. I've already got a few inquiries coming in, and so definitely mention that to your students if they aren't here, and we'll make sure that we put that out on our website and all that stuff. Because in the past, we've done fundraisers with professional acts and some of them have been very, very successful. We had Jello Biafro back in two thousand and eleven, that was a huge one, and every year, they're very good, but we've never tried just doing an entirely youth showcase. So this year, that's what we're going to go for, and that will be in December. That will feature the season shows, like always, and then three or four youth acts go downstage and show us what they got. Any other questions? Do kids have any questions over there? Oh, all you gotta do is ask. Drew?
Um, it's, well, it's leading the question, but just like, I'm at fault for this too, but I think a lot of like, the house band members really, like, we forget what being a house band means sometimes. And just like, for the past years, like, we all really thought of house band as like, it's fun, like, we're in a band, we're playing together, we're all friends, but in reality, we're representing the school. And I think we sometimes forget about that and we kind of focus on our, like, what we're doing on our own thing. So I think that we should really get back to like just stating that the house band needs to represent the school. And also, we tend to play at a lot of elementary schools, and it's like, I've told you this before, Sharkley, sometimes it's like the message isn't really received because like, we're a bunch of M.C. teenagers playing rock music and we don't really like, we're not very happy sometimes about it. I'm gonna be honest, we're not. So I think like, that's the question is like, will we be involving new rockers as like representatives for the elementary school more?
Yes.
In this process? Just because I think parents would react better to that, like, oh my god, the seven year olds totally shredding their guitar or something.
Yeah.
Rather than like, just seeing these teenagers play rock and roll.
Okay, well, it's very intimidating to some of the parents who are like, I need my children to always play.
But, to piggyback on it, I think parents would be shocked if they knew how old the kids are.
Right.
I mean, I think they would be shocked when they're saying half a fourteen to sixteen or whatever, I don't think they're, it's so hard to tell, okay, for now, I guess.
Yeah, that's true.
But I do think, if, you know, you said we are, that again, we're the school for this long, look where they're at, and give them a better picture, it would also, it would help.
I agree. And I gotta say, as part of our sort of future strategy, and not necessarily strategy, but just our, our future concept as a school, is I'd like to be doing more shows that include more of the overall school as opposed to just the house band playing all of our satellite shows. So that, I mean, for instance, this thing coming up next Saturday, it just makes sense because we're halfway through the season now, everybody's got four or five songs ready to go, and why not just have another show on stage at a really fun event where it represents like our whole demographic of the school, like you were saying, Drew, ten, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve-year-olds, and then all the way up through, because I think, like you're saying, seeing the fourteen-year-olds play but not knowing what age they are, but seeing the fourteen-year-olds play with a seven or eight-year-old is kind of a magical situation to see like the fostering of the young folks coming up. So, really great point, Drew, I appreciate you bringing that up again, for sure. Yeah, Ben?
So, I've had a lot of parents that have basically pestered them to directly see the show, and then they always ask, do you guys often like, how old are your parents or anything like, that notes saying, hey, you, here's what we do, this person did this, and I always say, I don't know, I never ask them. And then they say, well, I'm not going because they don't give it to me, and they get sad.
Yeah, that's a great question, though.
Do you, do you offer?
We do, we absolutely do. We will write, I'll write a recommendation letter for anyone who deserves one. And also, I've written some, looking around, I've written recommendations letters for so many students. And I don't, personally, I think it really helps, I think it really helps them get into the school because you do all the things that you do, whatever they are, maybe the student is doing well in school, they did well on their tests, and is also playing a sport, and maybe does a little bit of community service, but then they also perform at a nonprofit music school and spend X amount of hours a week working on that. It can only help, it's definitely not going to hurt anybody's chances to get in school. And I gotta say, whether it has to do with me, I mean, the students that I'm writing it for are all remarkable folks, but a hundred percent of the recommendation letters I've gotten, people have gotten into those schools. And I'm looking around and I'm seeing some of the people that I've written for. And so for college, absolutely, especially if there are students that intern with us in the summertime, and we also hope to open up more internship spots for the year, throughout the year. And honestly, if we can get to that point, I would like to offer stipends for paid internship programs as we get better, especially for the older kids who are, who can take on a little bit more responsibility in terms of maybe teaching side lessons, maybe helping out with rehearsals, doing more sort of like office work that's got a little higher level of responsibility. That's definitely something we want to open up next summer if we can. So, there was another student over here that had a question, was that you, Tasha?
Oh, just, I was gonna ask why you didn't use them.
Oh, great question, great question. Because, I had to run this, and the wireless is over here, wireless in the night. Entertained, entertained the question. Do I have any other questions out there from anybody? Yeah? You got one?
No, I was just waiting, my friend's playing.
Oh, see, I've done that too, yourself. But once again, thank you so much for being here, everybody, I really appreciate the effort you make with your students, bringing them to the school, but also, I know that it's difficult to get to our program sometimes, and I know that can be very frustrating. If there is, if there are any ideas around how to get a better carpooling system or any ideas around, one idea that I've had that is just really difficult to bring to fruition is having a teacher liaison or two that actually has a meeting spot that can help kids take public transportation, for anybody who's worried about their kids taking public transportation. So if anybody can sort of put that in their minds and think about it, that could really help people just getting to our school and...
Older kids that are, you can give them ideas?
Yeah, sure.
If you guys are okay with that, we'd be okay with that.
I mean, my older, she takes it, but it's the other parents, just younger kids' parents.
Yeah, and I understand that, I mean, especially Wednesday, Thursday, Friday afternoons are very difficult to get to our school, for all of us, our teachers, everybody. We all, and you know, as you guys all know, our city is getting just more, I don't even know what it's getting more of, but it's getting more of that. And it's, with all of the different construction projects going on down here, it can be day-to-day, I mean, even Saturdays sometimes, there's like entire road closures of, you know, important routes to get here and then festival season is a whole thing. But, I really love this space a lot, and I don't want to leave, I feel like our students feel very at home here in the Sailors Union, and I'm hoping that we can stick around just as long as possible, I really do. Anybody else got any questions, ideas, thoughts, anything like that? Yeah, Marcella?
Great presentation.
Thank you.
I'm Marcella, for anyone who hasn't met me, I've been here just as long as Shark and we still should now on the board. You mentioned something in this talk though that I think is important since we have like as many parents here as we've had in a while, is that since Christmas and the holidays are coming up, this is like, if you know someone at your work or work in a place that could like fund a house band show, this is kind of like our catch-cow is to get the most shows right around now, because we can book them for Christmas parties, Halloween parties, holiday parties, that's what everyone likes to have a little eggnog and do a little money. So, this is where I could actually use all of your help to like plant the seed. If someone's like, "Do you want to hire this really cheesy band that I found on the internet", you could just say, "Well, my kid plays for this awesome school and they can cover all these Christmas songs", and it wouldn't be cheesy, you're spending it towards a good cost, so just use that pitch. And hopefully we can get a little more shows to help us out.
And we're happy to do cheesy songs, yeah.
Totally.
Really, really, what's your word? There's, you know, guilty pleasures, the kids know, they love those songs. Just don't want anything. Anybody else? Go at once, go with us. Well, thank you once again so much for being here, so much for being in this community, this is an unbelievable sort of role that I have, I'm very thankful to be here and work with all these goofballs, it's really fun, and I hope to do it for a long time to come. We're looking forward to seeing you guys all at our next shows, but you'll see an email will go out this afternoon, about next Saturday, it's an eleven AM show out at the Sandcastle Classic, which is a Sandcastle building contest at Ocean Beach, and so, check it out. But, have a wonderful afternoon, everybody. I'll just hang here if anybody wants to come up and talk to me personally, otherwise, enjoy your weekend.